District to give us a presentation tonight. The fifth item on the agenda is looking at sixty seven Welch's Point Road, seventy seven Turtle Run Road. Those two items have been on and off the agenda in the last three days because of information or lack thereof. That said, for the board's purposes, at that juncture, I'll entertain a motion for you wanting to hear one, both, or the desires. That's a board decision, and that's where I left it relative to the agenda. Because as I said, we had it off the agenda and we put it back on at their request. So that's your decision whether you want to hear it or not tonight. And I'll cover that when we get to it.
Yes, sir. This evening is the agenda. Document pertaining to Dan's presentation and discussion was face up, and I put the others face down just not to distract you. They are copies of what you were digitally regarding the application. If you get to that, I just didn't want to distract your presentation, so that's.
Okay, thank you. So I'll turn the floor over to Dan. Thank you, Dan. Dan, the mic is right over there on the, would please?
The documents that were linked digitally, I'm happy to provide hard copies of that.
As I sent over were just studies that we were involved in through AWWA and other national organizations.
And you'll have to get closer to the mic. Thank you.
The items I sent to the planning board were studies we were involved in on our Narrows Pond as far as water quality, total maximum daily load and stuff like that. And I don't know if Dawn sent that electronically, but that's what those items were. More to show you that we do take the drinking water serious, so we are involved in the studies and the organization, so. So I'll start from this. I'm Dan Wells. For those that don't know me, I know most of you. Superintendent at the district, I've been there since ninety seven. I am a PE and I do have a water license and a wastewater license. Before that, I worked for an engineering firm, which is here tonight presenting something else. And just background on the district, for those that don't know, we were formed in nineteen twenty-three for water service in the sixties. For the fifties, we took on sewer service and we added a treatment plant and added a sewer system in town. We have about eleven hundred customers. Our growth rate is only a couple of customers per year. It's not a high density growth on that part. We typically have one or two leaks per year. We operate Monmouth Water System, which has about two hundred customers. They interconnected with Winthrop in two thousand and two because their water supply went bad. So they had to find another alternate water supply, which helped offset some of the costs from Carl Wallamale going bankrupt. We lost that revenue, so Monmouth helped offset that, so we didn't have to raise the rates quite so high. Volume of water we take out of Narrows Pond is about a hundred million gallons a year that we treat and we send to the system. We have seven people on staff. We currently own about two hundred and fifty acres around the pond for watershed protection just to try to help protect the water supply a little better. And there is a, the surface water treatment rule takes into account. They have a toolbox, they say, on water quality and how we do on protecting water quality, so these, I guess the way to look at it for the planning board issue is all of these upgrades or houses and stuff to get built will contribute to the water degradation in some way, a little bit at a time. When we protect the pond, it goes into a credit, I guess if you will, to drinking water program that we're doing the best we can to maintain water quality. So maybe we don't have to upgrade the treatment plant so quickly or add extra treatment trains or whatever we need to do to make the water quality better, so. I don't know if I explained that well, but. Yes, and part of that is they're looking at cryptosporidium, which is a little tiny organism, and we actually got credit for that treatment in our treatment system. Some treatment plants had to upgrade, some treatment plants had to do other stuff, so we're actually in really good shape, which is another reason for water quality, trying to maintain it. Our current treatment plant costs two point two million dollars to build. It probably would be double or triple that in today's dollars. And if we had to upgrade to a different type of plant, it would be double or triple that as well, which would be a huge waste of the initial investment. The filtration we use is slow sand filtration. It's actually a natural treatment process. The water actually goes through the sand. There's a bacteria layer on top that does all the treatment. We added a later layer of carbon in the middle just to polish the water, take more color and tannins out, and then we disinfect and put fluoride in it and adjust the pH a little bit. Then we also add ammonia to kind of carry the chlorine a little further out the system so it doesn't degrade over time in the water system. Maintenance on the treatment plant, clean the filters once every thirty days in the summer, once every ninety days in the winter. So it's not a huge labor-intensive treatment process. And then the land we have, we manage it for water quality. Obviously, we do do some timber harvesting, but it's directly, we look at water quality, what can we take out of here to help the stuff that's gonna stabilize the soil, better grow. So we look and we take advantage of that. And that's the water portion. The sewer division, like I said, was nineteen fifties. It come, we have a collection system here that goes to a main pump station. Monmouth comes into that. It gets pumped to Manchester, pumped to Hollowell, and then finally into Augusta, so we have no treatment here in Winthrop. Everything goes shipped to Augusta for treatment. Very expensive to maintain. We just did major upgrade to some of the pumping stations, and there's another pipe upgrade that's gonna happen shortly on that system. We, let's see, about a thousand customers on that, too. We maintain our sewer systems. We have a jet machine. We go out and we do it every four years, which is required by EPA that we do that. The current project we have going right now is a sewer upgrade project. We got, it's about a four point three million dollar project. We had to borrow one point two million. The rest is grant money, where we're gonna upgrade all our sewer pump stations just for the longevity of the system, which will set us up for the next thirty years or so without any major upgrades on that. We also line our pipes, which help. So we have a pipe that's seventy-five year useful life. We put a liner in it. We add seventy-five years to it, so we don't have to replace the pipes, and it's a lot cheaper. So that's basically that part of the thing. I don't know if there's any questions.
Dan, one more time, the major project on Memorial Drive Pump Stations, that's five pump stations.
There are five pump stations on Memorial Drive, and there's one at the Business Park, one at Mechanic Street, and then one at Welch's Point. The one at Memorial Drive, the furthest one out, Mechanic Street and Welch's Point, we're upgrading the pumps, upgrading the electrical system. The one at Mechanic Street, we're totally getting rid of. It's the oldest pump station in the whole system. Nineteen fifty-eight, I think it was installed. There's actually one original pump in there pumping still. So that's being taken out and putting an actual new structure in there.
And you said the number, the total amount cost?
Four point three million.
Four point three, and how much grant?
We borrowed one point two, one point three, so three.
The balancers grant?
Yeah.
And those are variable frequency pumps? The drives are variable frequency?
Correct.
That's for energy savings?
Well, we have single-phase service, so what it does is we can create three phases out of the VFDs so we can have a better pump or a more robust pump in there. And we made them all the same.
Yep.
So they're interchangeable. Messed up, yeah, we can interchange with something else, so.
Thank you.
Tried to do it smart, but. They will be replaced. Yeah. Station five and Business Park are done right now. We were gonna do Welch's Point two weeks ago, but one of the pumps was found to be bad before we even installed it, so that's at the factory getting redone. So, and this will be all throughout the summer. The contractor chose to wait till after the fourth on Memorial Drive before they set up their temporary pumps because they didn't want to bother anybody during the holiday. So after the fourth, you'll see some stuff happening out there.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Dan. Seventy-five year life cycle is design of. Can you speak to capacity at all?
Correct. Yeah, the seventy-five year design life would be when we line the pipes. We'd get an extra seventy-five out of them.
And one of the things that we've talked about on the planning board at times, and I think working with our liaison on the town council, is, you know, what do we have for opportunities for expansion? We're looking at the mill downtown and trying to see what we can do to reinvigorate that, to get more businesses to come in to get some apartments, low-income apartments. And we've had the question, and I don't know if anyone's come up with the answer, but what do we have for capacity on the lines?
On the lines, we're using very little of the capacity. As a matter of fact, when we upgraded Mechanic Street, we upgraded it so that if they put in apartments up there, the capacity would be there. That was some of the negotiations with the mill because he had to give us an easement for the pump station.
As we're talking to potential applicants for redevelopment, and they say we want to put in, you know, fifty new housing units in the mill, capacity's not gonna be an issue. That's nothing, you know, we'll obviously incorporate you into the discussions, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't believe that would be an issue on that. It's way, way oversized and we have capacity. Basically, what we'll do is we'll just, the start points will be up higher. So we're gonna use a little bit of the capacity and we'll just have to use more capacity in the wet well.
Is that capacity determined by Augusta?
No, and each individual pump station is just operational capacity. So it creates hydrogen sulfide when sewage sits too long, so you don't want to sit in the pump station for a very long time, so we may lower the operating level. It's only a foot. There's a lot more coming in, maybe a foot, two feet of water before we pump it out, so that all plays into it.
Okay, so we've got capacity in our pump stations, but we've also, is there some kind of a limitation on how much wastewater we can input into Augusta?
We are way down. So when the mill was operation, operation, there was probably three times the capacity coming out of Winthrop going to Augusta.
Gotcha.
So we have the capacity.
Thank you.
Yeah, and even the sewer lines in town, there are eight inch, ten inch, and twelve inch. Each of those areas, they're using very little of it. And when we lined the pipes, we got rid of a lot of that infiltration into the sewer. So that helped substantially.
Just a question about, we've had this question come up a couple of times. Water overs, they know what means, where you obviously have to deal with gravity, where water is not necessarily as much small subdivision, others. Says, would they start with you? Is that something they have? That.
So it was back in the early eighties, late seventies. I'm not exactly sure of the date. Each district had a chance to vote on whether they would fund expansions. Most districts voted no because you're putting all that expansion money on the existing ratepayers. So why does?
Put it this way. That's all I was looking for is how we voted and how that worked.
And if there's a subdivision going in, we need to look at capacity on the line, make sure the line's big enough when they put it in, so, which.
It's on the end of a line, that mean?
Yeah, if it's a six-inch line, it may not handle it. If it's eight-inch, it may be plenty, depending on where the pressure is to.
District.
I'd had the discussion previously with the planning board. It's a little more difficult when you're changing land use ordinances if we, because it's pretty restrictive on the water supply zone as opposed to a commercial zone. So I'm not sure how that would play out. But yeah, we would welcome any change that we could make it more restrictive. It would definitely help out water quality.
Definitely still.
I would say that was fair.
Other thing that we we lose the staff. And there are uses.
It's a restriction in that zone where there's no commercial development, so the thousand feet around the pond. I'm not sure there's any phosphorus stands or anything else that were put in the.
Disconnect.
Yeah.
Some, it's called type standard use table or the language should just be.
Yeah, that might be something to have Bill involved in because that was actually done before I started. And we no longer have access to the superintendent who's here before me, so Bill Monaco might have some institutional knowledge on that.
Well, the answer to this because of you have your.
Yeah, agriculture is kind of a, it's a hard thing to nail down, a hard thing to restrict because of USDA and because of those rules that are in place. It just, all we would look for is to be monitored and not over-fertilized, not over, I mean, obviously not of a lot of erosion and some other things in there, but it's hard, that's a hard one to. There's no specific cases on that, but I mean, that's our job essentially is to keep that water clean, so that's what we try to do.
And an example would be if someone wanted to have two chickens, that's one thing. If they want to have a decosticized chicken farm, it'd be a big problem.
That would be a commercial.
And that's why it's left open to make a decision based on the demand or application.
I, yeah, I would think so. But if it's commercial, then that's totally out. Like the solar farm, that one of the solar farms that was proposed in the watershed area, that's a commercial development, so that got kicked out.
Okay, I got a chemistry question. I have a five-micron filter on my home supply on Memorial Drive, and we get the black accumulation on showers and faucets.
Yeah.
What is it? Is that bacteria or?
If it's coming out of the pipes, it's just what's on, what's in the pipe.
So it's residue then?
It's residue.
And it happens to accumulate there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it normally would be a pass-through, but we have such a small filter, it's gonna grab everything that comes through. One thing I would like to add, this topic is a hot topic at this point, grease traps. So you guys would approve a restaurant, I'm assuming. We have a grease trap standard, and we actually have a letter going to an establishment that just opened from our attorney because they didn't comply with our grease trap standard. So I don't know if we can work that out if there's a restaurant that comes in, because we need town and Winthrop and the district should cooperate on those issues, because you guys have standards as far as all the other stuff. And then we have standards we have to meet with DEP requirements, so. I don't know if they come to the planning board or if that's something to handle by mark.
Different than, say, Department of Human Services, I know that in working in the eating and lodging program way, way back in my career, they had, you know, if you can open a restaurant, you gotta have a grease trap. So if somebody's opening one and doesn't have one, that's obviously an issue, but I didn't know if their standards were any, if yours, I'm seeing is any different.
Yeah, we had to adopt standards. So the Board of Trustees went through a painful process to try to figure out how to best protect the sewer system and not burden the restaurant owner with, you know, work. Those internal grease traps is a constant battle trying to get them clean, and so they voted to go with an external grease trap, which is what our requirements require. And those are passive. They do the job, you know, once a year, once every other year, they pump them out and they're done. So it is a little bit different, but subsurface disposal rules is what we follow, so that is in the plumbing code.
As well.
Correct, yeah. There, we'll have to figure something out. Yeah, something's gotta be figured out. I mean, the rules are the rules, unfortunately. I can't deviate. I can't interpret. I mean, my board, we went to an attorney with our rules and they're like, that's gospel. That's what it is. You can't change anything. So unfortunately, they have to comply with the rules in some math manner. And I know there's real estate issues there as far as, but there's gotta be a spot to stick something somewhere, even if it's leased on the next property owner, property over or whatever. I mean, I'm willing to work with anybody going on the site, look at it and talk to them and cite something, but. Yeah, I, yeah.
All set, Dan? Would all set? Thank you, Dan.
You mean?
Side of the agenda. As I explained earlier, it was item five. And as the two cases we had at the last meeting and made this meeting available to continue that process. That said, along the lines, there's a question about material and the board having material and a timing manner to review it to be able to do a good job tonight. So Dawn, if you could just share with us where we're at with that process of providing information. First, if you, the list of what we expected from the last meeting on each project and where we stood with getting that information.
Thank you. So there was a tight turnaround time because you did continue it to this meeting, and normally you have a workshop here, so you know, you're trying to accommodate the applicant, which made it difficult, you know, for them to turn it around that quickly. About the information on Monday, and I reviewed it, and I did not believe that the information that you requested was present and wanted to continue to work with the application meeting. They did indicate they did want to come. It is your determination, you know, ultimately as to whether or not you have the information that you need or desire. So the application is off the agenda as it normally be any application, but the difference being that you didn't have an opportunity to review information. I did forward it to you digitally yesterday, and I provided hard copies for you this evening as well. That's really what was in front of you. I just didn't want to throw you for a loop because you weren't expecting that. So one is, so the applicants for sixty-seven Welch's Point, they had a whole package. And again, this is a copy of what you received digitally. What's additionally in front of you now is there's an email from the agent for that, Jeff Allen, and I had had some questions, the things that I felt were pending, that I needed answers, or I felt that you would need these answers. So he did provide them and indicate that he could go over them. So I can't speak to the responses, but the applicant would like to discuss them with you. the applicant would like to discuss them with you. So that's for one. Similar for the other that, you know, I reviewed it and I just felt like the, the information wasn't detailed enough for a productive conversation. You do have a copy of that map. You know, a, a quick observations I had made was there's fourteen spaces in the right of way, which though you can't have spaces in the right of way. And there's no site plan that I found for any of the parking that's on here. And there's three spaces. You can see I provided a copy of the tax map, the, and we, I show three spaces on here, two of which are owned by the applicant. And the third one I have as a separate tax parcel and on record, it's not in the same ownership and I looked at the registry, I couldn't. Then conveyed because, you know, the tax dated, not this, have you, but I didn't find anything, so that I, I would let the applicant speak to that if that is in fact part of their application, part of their, so I just, I don't, I don't have enough information or feedback than that, but the applicant is here and would like to.
Thank you. That said, um, it's appropriate at this point, given you just gotten the information recently. If indeed there's one or both of these you want to hear, I'll entertain a motion on A sixty seven Welch's Point. The motion would be, yes, we'd like to hear what they got to say. And go from there. Do I hear a motion to do that? Right?
Motion that we hear the applicant. Information they provided. I haven't, I've gone through the package you provided yesterday. I obviously haven't had a chance to review this memo tonight, but want to hear them speak the issues, and I don't know if they'll be in a decision making. It's the time we've got.
I hear a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we are now ready to hear thirty, sixty seven Welch's Point presentation, hopefully the information we asked for our last meeting.
Good evening. Jeff Allen from AE Hudson, and I do appreciate you letting us speak tonight and to address the three questions we had last week or two weeks ago and also the two different designs that we are worrying or working with last week. We've, I think we've been able to nail that down and give you an accurate representation of, of what's actually being proposed. So first, let's go over the, the three questions that you had. The first one was we were proposing a water quality buffer, a fifty foot water quality buffer back from the lake and in the diagram that we sent you, that isn't all colored up pretty like mine. In the diagram we sent you, the fifty foot setback from the lake buffer is represented by this hatched area over here. So that area will be mulched. There'll be some plantings that'll be put in there and I think the applicant intends to work with Bill Monigal to, to put in appropriate plants in there that would be phosphorus uptake systems. And that was the first issue. The second one was the location where the shed is going to be with shed, the bunkhouse. I, I'm not sure what you want to call it, but you've, you've seen it when you did the site visit. And that's now indicated on here as this box right here. And again, that's setback as far from the lake as we could get it. And also the, you wanted a full setup of the plans with elevations. And as you remember, at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, we slightly changed the plan. And so now the new plan that we got a couple of weeks ago has been incorporated on the site plan. It's very much the same shape. And that's this area here. This building. One other change that we've made that's not, I'm not sure how well it's described is talking with the applicant, we had looked at having, originally we planned on replacing, there's a gravel driveway there now that goes all the way up to the camp, which is right by the lake. The gravel drive or the driveway now will be made of crushed stone. And this is the, like the three quarter inch crushed stone that water goes right down through. It's, it's not impervious like a gravel driveway would be. It's you know, a clean, clean stone that the water would just percolate right through. And we use that all the time. It's, it's a readily available product and we use it for that purpose. So that was the, the plans and elevations I'll talk about in a little bit. But again, on my diagram here, this pink line is the hundred foot setback from the lake. The yellow line is the fifty foot setback. And so that's, that was used as our boundary of where the mulch area is going to be with the hatching over on the side. Any questions so far? Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I did not call it impervious because it's if we did, we'd be somewhere around twenty-three or twenty-four percent, which is it's still a reduction. Before we had, the site was twenty-nine point five, twenty-nine point six percent. We'd be down around twenty-four, mainly because if we, it's been shortened up. You know, the, the camp, the existing camp is right up next to the lake, had a long driveway to get into the garage. And so this gives you, you know, a much shorter driveway going in there. So this is, you know, is a reduction just because of the, the location of the building. Deep. Which, who, Beth, who? Okay, head on. Okay, don't know her. This is, gravel is, yeah. And that's, that's something I've, that's in that email that I sent to Dawn that I'll, I'll get to in a second. And so I have it in, with or without, I think, in there. The other thing you wanted were elevations of the building. I think we sent full elevation drawings to you before electronically.
When it's called, I did not.
Correct, yeah. There, we had one iteration that had some things that I decided to change. So this is, as Dawn correctly points out, the, the most recent one. We had, I tried to get something out as quickly as I could and I missed something, so. This is the elevation when you're looking at it from you, the edge of the water is over there. You can see where the blue line is the, the edge of the water. So this is the height of the existing camp. I darkened the line in a little bit here. It's a little darker than it's on your drawing. This is the height of the existing camp. So most of the camp is less than that twenty-eight foot six that the existing camp was. The exception for that is the, I, I call it the tower. I think it's Penny's office that's going up there. And so that again is under the thirty-five foot limit. So that, that overall height is, is acceptable. The issue is it's within that hundred foot setback. Part of it is in this, from this side, as you know, the, the lot's kind of on a corner, has water on, on one side and in front of it. And so this is with the water in front of it. It's, it's got about three or four feet of intrusion into that. So this is about ninety-five feet from the shoreline. This is looking at the it's just under thirty-five feet. Yeah, so thirty-five is the maximum at, at a hundred feet or beyond one hundred feet. But, yeah. And this is the angle looking from the other side of the lake. Again, the water line is over there and the hundred foot setback from that side. This would be the view that you'd see from the main body of the lake. This is, this is what I would call the front of the camp. And so that's about halfway in there. So I think the, the room up there was thirteen feet, something like thirteen by thirteen for the tower. So this is about probably six or six and a half feet into it. So the front edge of this right here, this being your hundred foot setback at the pink line, this would be about ninety-four feet back.
So I, excuse me, if I look at the plan view, there's a square, dotted square. Be left of the garage and in the corner of the house.
Yes.
Does that represent that tower?
It does.
So that hundred foot mark going through there is shown on that plan view.
Yeah, this is the square you're referring to here and this.
Sorry, point to the square again? Yeah, yes, that's the same square I'm talking about.
The same, same, same thing you're looking at. And so that's, that's where the tower is physically. So this.
West of that hundred foot line would have to be the twenty, twenty-eight existing building, right?
Yes, that, that's what the standard is.
On that line, it could be thirty-five.
Correct. That's, that's what the standard is.
I don't know, looking at the elevation, the one you had up there a minute ago, I don't know how you do that. I don't know how you get that tower, the right elevation.
We ask for mercy because.
Oh, so it is an error, it is an
It, it is.
Not in compliance, I guess.
Yeah, it is. It, we recognize that it's a little bit out of compliance. However, we want to kind of bring to your attention the other things that, that we're doing here to try to better the lake and to be in compliant as much as we can. Again, we're, we're setting back, I think it's a minimum of sixty-two feet roughly from the lake, whereas the current building is ten feet from the lake. We're decreasing our impervious footprint. And this is, this is a bit confusing to me. The impervious now is a gravel parking lot and a longer gravel parking lot and driveway. And the camp itself is all impervious. So if, as I said earlier, the overall impervious area now is about twenty-nine point five percent of the lot, twenty percent is the standard. If the, we're allowed to call that crushed stone driveway pervious, not impervious, then we, we'd be at twenty point seven percent. So we're very close to your standard if, if not. And if we're not able to call that driveway impervious or, I'm sorry, pervious, then we're still at twenty-three, twenty-four percent, which is, which is a marked improvement from close to thirty. So the other thing we're doing here is, is putting in this, this phosphorus buffer, the mulch out front because all of the runoff from the property will go through this buffer before it gets to the lake. So you're getting a lot of filtration there. The other thing is the roofs here are all, we have drip line filters on the edges of the roof. So all the water coming off the roof will go into these filters and be treated, which is a regular phosphorus removal method that the DEP desires as a filtration. And we're treating all of the, the phosphorus from the roof. So we've made what I think is almost extraordinary efforts to try to improve the site for water quality. And so because of that, we're asking for your indulgence with the tower being about a quarter of it within that hundred feet.
Want to finish the elevations?
I'm sorry?
You want to go finish the elevation? I, I got you off track.
Oh, okay. Now, I just printed out these two elevations because I do have the floor plan. The other elevations were provided in your package and we provide full size plans, elevations to Dawn. But this is the the floor plan. Again, the lake is up at the top of the page. And when I looked at the impervious, I'm counting all of the decks, the awnings or the, the roof elements that come out, the drips, drip lines are included in that impervious area. Because I think that's that's the standard. There'll be about a one, one foot eve on the main house and the bunkhouse has about a six inch eve outside of the footprint. It's, it's just frostfall, isn't it? Yeah, just frostfall.
On that floor plan, I'm looking at the area schedule. These numbers are all of the new, new structure, right?
Yes, this is, this is the new structure. And again, these are architectural numbers, so I believe they're inside of the walls. Our numbers are a little larger than this. This, this table is more architecturally driven than ours is. Ours is more site plan derived.
Obviously asking for thirty percent increase and
Yes.
Where are those calculations?
I am not sure. This is a smaller footprint, a smaller building than we had before, and I think before we were at I'd have to look at my notes.
When you say footprint for estimating, that's not what you're looking for? That's the footprint of the new building, new structures. The table right there.
If you look at just the first floor, the seventeen fifty-seven would be the first floor, but that's the footprint, not the, the eaves. That does not include the eaves. I think that number
We don't need to solve it here, but I mean, all said and done, we need to look at what those numbers are, what, what it was.
And, and less than thirty percent more.
Where the thirty percent?
Yes.
You finished or?
Um, I believe so. The other yeah, that's, I think that's mostly what I have. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Right?
Can you walk us through the memo, the memo to Dawn real quick?
Certainly. The there's some confusion on the table that goes up in the corner here. And the, my confusion was the conflation of having both impervious area and unvegetated area. In my mind, the bottom, under where a building is, is unvegetated. Apparently in ordinances, that's not correct. The unvegetated according to the town standards is anything that's not a structure, that's a piece of hardscaping that is not not, doesn't grow grass or doesn't grow vegetation. So if that's true, if, if it's just stuff that's not existing in paved, impervious area or or building, I have two different numbers that I calculated here. So looking at the total non-vegetated area, if you include the buildings, which I don't think is the correct interpretation, I'm at twenty-seven point three percent. If you look at the non-vegetated area for everything, like the driveway, the walkways, there's a little remnant of a steps that go down to the lake in there and we're at six point seven percent of the lot. Now, if I understand it, the standard there is twenty Now, if I understand it, the standard there is twenty percent. Twenty percent impervious and twenty percent non-vegetated. And that and is important because it's not or. Um, so if you get twenty percent impervious, we're at twenty, well, if we call this pervious, the driveway, then we're at twenty point seven percent. If we don't, we're somewhere around twenty-four percent. Which is over the standard, but less than what we were grandfathered for. If we're looking at just the, the walkway and the little steps down by the dock, by the lake. It totals to like twelve hundred and seventy-three step, square feet. So that's six point seven percent. Six point seven is less than twenty. So we're meeting that standard if I've got my definition correct.
How has D E P interpreted this, this size gravel that you're using in, in, uh, in the past in terms of pervious, impervious?
They treat it differently in, when you're doing phosphorus calculations, because they don't call it impervious for phosphorus calculations. You have a different runoff coefficient for that because it's going into the, the stone. And, uh, so they do treat it differently than gravel and asphalt.
Phosphorus calculation.
For phosphorus calculations. That's the only.
Treat it under the definition of impervious area.
They're silent on that. They don't mention that because it's not usually done. This is something, again, that's, the guy owns a paving company. He's not going to pave out here. I can't believe that, but you know, this, this is a, a different situation. So I don't think D E P has, specifically has a definition that would include this or exclude this.
Or grandfathered, that just kind of jumped out at me. And I think Dawn, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we provided a memo that I generated based on a file review of the second property. So as I went back, Jeff, and we're trying to do this with all the projects, projects that we've got coming in front of us now, look and see what's happening. Major land zoning, even people had properties, they did a bunch of things. If it's in effect at that time, it's considered legal, non-conforming structure, or being non-abused type thing. But I think there's documentation in the file that at one point in time, post, full land zoning law, that lot had twenty percent or less impervious cover. So I think what's owners of the property along the lines, excuse me, expanded more than they should have. So I don't think we're going to have any flexibility in that twenty point seven. I think if we can get past the gravel discussion on whether that's pervious or impervious. All I'm saying, all I'm saying is I don't think, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, because these guys have been doing this a lot longer than I have. I don't think we've got flexibility to deviate from that twenty percent, do we? Regardless of what material is used.
No, no. And I got, I got a couple others to add to.
Don't have the three few, it, we're, we pushed it back as much as we could. Yeah. So.
You slid the garage more behind.
That, yeah. Right. But we're, we've got to look at it from two different directions. And so we probably could slide it this way to, to, as you, as you suggested. But we can't slide it that way because we've got, uh, the ten foot setback from the neighbor here. And so with, uh, with the, the bunkhouse there, it's, it wouldn't be possible to move it far enough to get it there. So. That only gets it one way though. That only, it's the.
Let's avoid designing it here, please. Greg, are you done?
Uh, there are a couple of different kinds of geotextile and, yeah.
As overall.
No, I'm thinking rather than a woven fabric, if you're doing non-woven, they're, they're very poor.
There's a lot of different.
Yeah.
Whatever the engineering is.
Okay.
So.
Requires beds and beds, plumbing and cooking facilities. Yeah.
It's a lot of discussion internally. I'm just.
We would need a variance, one for the tower and two for the, uh, the bunkhouse. If we were to move the bunkhouse. Well. For the impervious. Yeah.
Again, it's. Or pervious cover.
Google Earth. To contain all three. You have to have sleeping, cooking and sanitary. If one of those goes away, the, the, the obvious thing to go away would be the toilet. That's the problem. If, because moving it around to where, uh, Rick wants to move it, it's, um, he's got to do a bunch of replumbing to make it into the system. So if we had the house there with just, with no toilet in it. And, and apparently no sink. Cause you'd need the sink. Then it would clearly not be a dwelling unit, right? Plumbing takes, takes some thought. Yes. Yeah. So the, the all. Well, to get the tower, um, you'd have to move it, uh. It's, it's not an easy answer, Rick. It's, you know, it's, it's some, you'd have to remove, uh, I don't know what's the math, six hundred square feet of development up there. Four, four thirty-five, okay. Four thirty, you'd have to move four hundred and thirty-five square feet of your house out of that hundred foot zone. So that's probably moving the house back. Well, it. It would be probably eight or 10 feet, I'm guessing. And. Well, you got your 20 foot, you got the 20 foot that stops you from doing that. Yeah, the, the most you could. Full sized garage, because we've got the setback here from, from the road. No, the garage can't go any further back than where the setback is.
Yeah, my fault.
Yeah. I, I can't judge, you know, I'm good, but I'm not that good. So we can, it will make an improvement. The other thing that we could lose is some of the deck. We may have to lose a deck to make it all work. Well, a deck some, somewhere, I mean, I've got to get down 435 square feet. Moving this back. Because we're only gaining in this section right here. Because you've also got the hundred foot setback from this side. So moving it back, you can't move it down anymore. Because you've got the setback here. We could move it back to here. But. Yeah, and maybe we lose the back of the deck over here. It, I think it's possible. I do think it's possible. It's just, I can't, can't design on the fly.
Okay, at this juncture, I think it's appropriate to entertain a motion that the application is complete. Don't hear a motion? I, go ahead, Don.
Still at the last meeting.
Okay, so never mind. So I would assume we're not prepared to approve it tonight. To jump through hoops like we did tonight. No, we're not going to do that. We're not going to do that. That's inappropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead, Don.
I believe so, because the word is "and" in there. Right, but. So my, my thought was, the way I defined it in my head was prob, was correct then. In that, under the, the building itself is impervious. And, the. If you had a paved walkway, paved driveway, that would be impervious. Any sort of hardscaping. Percent each is, but is it one, 20% of the entire lot for both impervious and non-vegetated? That seems unreasonable.
Let's do, let's do this. Let, you two put your heads together and, and come to agreement on what that is and help Don understand and ask what that is. We need to understand.
Uh, yeah, because I'm lost. Um, oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Don.
Do, make sure that you continue it to. I think it's taping it. This is some notification.
We need a motion to continue?
Can you continue to jetline? I think it's a date, time specific. We don't have to notice everyone again, because this is the notice.
Okay. Your motion? A second to that. And I'll say again, in a timely manner, so we get the information and be able to study it and come here and do a good job for you. Okay, and is there any public input tonight relative to this? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And now it's Don on this matter?
Okay. One thing that would be most important to get is that definition of impervious versus covered. I, I think it's very unusual to say 20% unvegetated for the entire lot. That's, I don't know how many camps would actually meet that standard. Because 20%, so this is a 19,000 square foot lot. 20% would be 3,800 square feet. Everything, driveway, building, 3,800 square feet. I don't think that's possible.
Thank you. Okay, next item. Item B, 77 Turtle Run Road. Again, I'll entertain a motion to hear input on this project application. Have a second? All in favor? Okay. Who's presenting tonight for? This project? I'm sorry, excuse me just a minute. Don, can you, can you go down a list of what we expected from the last meeting?
I, I don't.
You don't have, okay, go ahead.
Things pertaining to the association document. Specific things that were asked for in the association doc. And, and regarding Park, CSI, regarding Park.
Nice.
Those are the broad. That needed to be.
Thank you.
So I want to thank everyone for the board. I understand that, I think this is our probably third planning board meeting here. Attorney Andrew Duchet, I represent Mills Stewart Realty LLC. Ben Murray, who's, who you've seen before, from the engineering company, AD Hudson. Handing out some additional information. I'm happy to take questions, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things from a legal perspective. One is that this is an application for a condo conversion. Your zoning ordinance is silent on that. You, you don't have anything in terms of what is required for a condo conversion. You don't have a moratorium on condo conversions or anything like that that we've seen. So, so this is an application for a condo conversion under the main condominium, condominium act. My understanding based on prior planning board meetings is there's been a lot of conversation about the existing business. Which is. The Lakeside Lodge and Marina. We are not seeking. In any way, a conversion of that business, meaning we are not seeking any change in use. Change in development or anything along those lines, in terms of the Marina business. What we are seeking is, in regards to the dwelling units, is a condo conversion. And so we're, and so I know there's been a lot of discussion about parking and, and parking limits and things of that nature. And I, and I get that, I understand that. I understand that the most recent development of your zoning code has now created a new Marina development based on parking limits and, and that's, that's fine. That's what municipalities do. But at least with, with respects to Lakeside Lodge and Marina. That has been in existence for many years. I haven't, I haven't gone back and looked. I can. I do note that there's a 2004. Permit by your, by the code enforcement officer. Reiterating that the existing. Operations there are in compliance with, with code. And so that's fine. And, and in addition to that. They've gone above and beyond and have now submitted a, a parking plan that would, would be in compliance. I just want to make it clear. That from a legal standpoint. I don't think that's required. I don't think that's even allowed. We're certain, we, we have presented in the good faith offer and, and as a presentation. But again, we, we're, we're now starting to get into two different arguments, right? One is whether or not they're entitled to a condo, a condo conversion, right? You have any, you have any multi buildings unit in a particular municipality. Somebody looks to convert those, those buildings into a condo, they fall under the main condominium, condominium act. Certain towns have ordinances that regulate that. You do not. And so I think you fall under state statute in that regard. To the, to the extent that we go above and beyond that, I would just argue you start stepping outside of your particular jurisdiction in that regard. But again, we, at the last meeting, I understand that there were certain questions that were asked. We have, I think we've touched upon each one of those. I, I have amended the condominium declaration to address. Impervious service. Restrictions on, on improvements and repair, which we're all fine with. What I get a little uncomfortable about is when we start looking at what has existed and start adding on other restrictions in that regard. So for example, there were some questions about the parking on, on, on Turtle, Turtle Run Road, which has existed. And again, I'd have to go back and look at how long it's existed. I'm. I know from growing up in Wales, Maine, and not being too far from this particular area and familiar with the area. That those parking spots had existed since Lakeside Lodge has existed. That is a municipal decision, whether or not you, you decide to take away public parking or not. It's not ownership parking. We're not claiming that it's ownership parking. We are just indicating on the plan that those parking, those parking spaces exist. And I know that there's been questions about that. But again, we're just, what we are putting on the plan is like, whether it exists or not. Whether the town can take it away or not, I, I think that's a whole other discussion. And that would be something for the town council or whatnot to, to make a determination. But we are, what we are showing as a business is what it exists and, and what we are utilizing and what we are trying to. Implement in, in terms of, you know, creating. You know. Certain amount of. You know, unity and whatnot, based on the various businesses in the area. So for example, we, every condominium unit has, has a parking space. That is what is required under the main condominium act. We have done that. There's been a request to add overflow parking. I don't know, there's nothing in the main condominium act that says you have to provide for that. And again, we can, we can explore that, but I don't think it's, it's, it's a requirement. And, and again, there's nothing in your ordinance which specifies that that should be a requirement. So I just, in terms of our discussion tonight, because again, I think. Ben Murray has done a really good job at addressing various concerns and addressing various aspects of, of, of the asks. But I just want it on the record tonight, in case there has to be an appeal. I don't want there to be. What, what the authority is in regards under the main condominium act, based on a condo, condo conversion, as to what's allowed or not allowed. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Hey, listen. So this is your presentation?
Yes. And, and.
What is he presenting? Don, are you presenting, Ben? That's a question I just asked. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I guess I want to better understand, why are you coming to the planning board if this is a main state law and you're doing a condominium conversion? Why does this land on us?
Because there was, there was an email that laid out four or five different concerns about parking, parking space.
I understand why you're physically here. That's not what I was talking about. Why is this whole application here? If you're using the main state law, we have no ordinance, why did this come to the planning board? That's what I was asking.
So, under the law, their state does have condominium. But locally, it is a subdivision. You're not looking at the condominium. You're not looking at the condominium. The state says that you can't include ownership, this form of ownership. So if this was not in the, much easier. You have a non-conformity, which is allowed to exist in perpetuity until you change it. Our ordinance says you can change it from one non-conformity to another non-conformity. And there's this thing that keeps going back and forth. So if it stays as a commercial use, which is what initially this was, the discussion was, at least with me, then you're looking at, so now this parking is being commandeered by the rent unit, which leaves no parking. Which is where the discussion went. So they're two different things.
I would argue that residential use is a much lesser use than commercial, right? Commercial would, people come and going, renting in and out, in and out. As soon as you sell the, once they become residential, once they become condominium use, again, they have the designated parking spot. Right now, there's, right now, it exists as it exists, right? So there's no requirements for extra parking or, or whatnot than that exists right now. It's been existing since, again, I'd have to go back and look, but as far as I'm concerned, I think it's back in the eighties, again, based on my limited observation from growing up, not too far away. So, so we are looking for a lesser use, because again, it's not commercial use, it's not tenants coming and going, they would all have their designated parking. We're going now, and, and then the only business that then is now existing is the Marina, which is, their boats are there, but they don't stay there. They're, they're not, their cars aren't there, the, things of that nature. Like, they're not allowed to leave their trailers there, or anything along that, or they're renting that the boats that exist there, based on Lakeside Lodge and Marina that currently exists. The, the motel business is, is, is not a viable, I think we can all agree on that in the state of Maine, and, and we see that existing up and down, up and down the highways, right? So that can continue to exist and be a blight on communities. I see it heading up to Washington County, along Route One, things of that nature. Or you can look to adapt and find new ways to create opportunities, create business in those communities, one of which is make these private, make these wholly owned. They're not, again, it's not, we can, we can rentals and you, you've seen our declaration, these are not, they're not VRBOs. I have a, there's a week-long lease, at least, right? So it's not like weekends or day, day use. So again, we're trying to prevent that kind of consternation in the community and whatnot. And it's just a better viable model than the classic motel cottage that is, that doesn't exist anymore.
I'm not trying to argue use, I'm trying to understand.
And that's fine, so if you're going to look at within your subdivision ordinance, then you have to look within what we're looking to convert from a condominium perspective. What you have, but what you have also lumped into that is the commercial operation, right? The Marina, which has existed from day one. And then, and so when you start adding, when you start talking about parking along Turtle Run related to that, I, I don't know how that falls into the condominium conversion, right? If you're looking at each particular unit that's being converted, and that each particular unit that's looking for a parking space or whatever it may be, and you're looking at declarations and there are bylaws and all that thing, that's fine, that is all fair game. When we start moving outside of that, that's, that's where.
Let me ask you a question.
Certainly.
As I understand it, you correct me if I'm wrong, but you've incorporated the ramp, one condominium on top of the office slash cafe. I believe you've incorporated the ramp and, and that building in the, in the condominium arrangement.
Correct, that is, that is the cafe, we've, we've left that there in its particular existence.
So, my point would be, how does that part of the condominium? That doesn't make sense to me. It's part of the Marina, you, you talk about the commercial Marina, it's part of that. Why is that incorporated with this, with the condominium arrangement?
Great question, we could certainly pull it out, but to give you a perfect example.
I mean, why would you want the condominium association managing, trying to manage that ramp and, and that rest of that property? Why would you do that?
Again, I, I would, in looking at the plan, I don't think it, the ramp in that particular part is out, I think it's, I think it's exempt. But, but to, again, because I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak.
Yeah, yep. That's incorporated into the condominium units. That's why I'm saying it doesn't make sense. To me, doesn't make sense.
I think it's, I think there's a cross out. I'm a little Johnny come lately, but to give you a perfect example, my law office is part of a condominium unit. We are Hobson's Landing in Portland. The two, there are two commercial spaces on the first floor that are both commercial spaces. Everything above that is residential, so you can have, you can have blended use. But again, what I'm, what I'm trying to distinguish is the fact that of the continued grandfathered non-conforming use, we've, we've heard a lot about non-conforming use. That has existed at least until two thousand four. That's, that's the last thing I've seen in the file here in, in your town that the court informed, that's been approved, right? So I'm going from there.
Okay, thank you. Go, shut with, okay, Ben, go ahead.
Can I just jump in real quick, Mr. Chilton? I think part of my confusion, quite honestly, was looking at your, your covenants, the fact that your site plans are showing easements granted to the Marina operation from the condominium association. I mean, if, if there were no easements across any of that land, and it was strictly the condominium association, and there was no reference to the Marina, that never would have, we wouldn't have, never would have, I never would have thought to ask about the Marina itself. That's where parking came in, that's where dock storage came in, way back now.
Super fair. So the reason being is that I think legal, from a legal standpoint, it, it makes more sense to, one, keep that on, all under the same real estate holding entity, grant the easement back. And two, we've also, again, just from a, I guess, altruistic standpoint, have granted the condominium association a right of first refusal. And we've, I, we've seen that in other, other aspects around Maine and other municipalities. We think it's a nice thing to do. We're seeing it more with like, for example, with like, mobile home parks, things of that nature. Again, it's more of an altruistic standpoint, grant back to like, the people who are going to be buying, and, and it, you know, it creates value for those people buying those units. So we're not, you know, we recognize that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ben.
Evening. Ben Murray from eighty hots again, nice to see you all. First off, I want to thank the board for hearing us tonight. I know it's a workshop night and something you guys currently do, so I appreciate that, to help us keep on track. So, I also want to apologize for the late submission on the materials that are just passed out. In my mind, I thought that tonight was just a continuation, and I didn't know there was an actual, you know, quote unquote deadline to get these submissions in, so right up front, apologize for that, Don. But I did pass out a package to each one of you, and love to go over that with you. It kind of takes, takes up where we left off two weeks ago. The first item is the parking that Andre has talked about. So what we did is, in the interest of illustration of the parking, we did a, a site plan for the lot across the road. So this, this one shows the entire property, and I, I think you are correct, Don. I think there is some type of tax map, assessor issue with the town as far as this property, because you look at the tax map, there is no number for this lot. It says property owner is on the other map, forty-three. Yeah, I think there might be an error in there that we can get resolved, but. Yep. But feel confident that all this is Mills Stewart Realty, we can resolve that. We have that. Yeah, yeah, we have that one, that's fine. So what we did is basically took an aerial, what's there? This is the outline of the existing gravel that's there. And what we've shown is, we've, per the ordinance, the ordinance requires thirty parking spaces per Marina, with, with twenty-five percent of that being parking spaces for boat and trailer. So what we did conservatively, sorry, yeah, so Marina parking requirement is thirty spaces. Of that thirty spaces, twenty-five percent of those spaces have to be long enough for a trailer as well. No, I'm saying the ordinance has requirement of thirty spaces per Marina. It doesn't matter if you've got five slips, if you've got five hundred slips. The ordinance says thirty parking spaces per Marina. Yep. With twenty-five, again, with twenty-five percent of those being for trailers. Doesn't at all, which is, which is. Right. Correct. No, which was surprising, to tell you the truth. You think it would be a percentage of the slips, but that's what it is. So using that, we took this Marina, as well as the Marina down at Turtle Run, so it's a total of sixty parking spaces. Twenty-five percent of that would be for trailers. And we've shown those spaces in this gravel area, that it meets that requirement. There's plenty of room for all those spaces there. We know there's a lot of parking that goes on beyond that, but we just took the gravel area that's there, that we, that we walked through and that, that site visit that day. And as Andre mentioned, the on-street parking. So Turtle Run has a, as you may or might not know, has a very large right of way, sixty-six feet wide. The paved area for Turtle Run Road is only twenty feet. The poles, the electrical poles are actually in the middle, well, a little bit off to the edge of the right of way. So historically down Turtle Run Road, there's been a large area for on-street parking. I went by there tonight and all the way down through, you know, cars lined right up, on-street parking. So I've shown that, figured to the limit, I think a little conservative, because I know it extends up to the corner as well. So that is quote unquote public parking in the right of way. Anyone in Marina Cafe, or anyone in any of these houses can park there. So I've shown that. I've shown the existing dumpster. There was some questions earlier about solid waste, about whether we were going to give access to that dumpster for waste. We decided not to. And on the other plan, the rec plan, which I'll mention later, there is a spot for a dumpster now. I'll show that a little bit later. So that is the parking. And in addition to the parking, we haven't shown any overflow parking, based on Andre's conversation and the abundance of public parking that's along Turtle Run Road for availability. We've given the units their parking spaces. If they have guests, they've got to go out and find parking space on, on the right of way or another location. But we are not, on this plan, we are not designating any overflow parking at this time. On the next item. Oh yeah, yeah, we've got plenty of parking. Yeah, this, this doesn't take into account any parking, you know, up in this green area that we know occurs. Yeah, there's a lot of parking. Right, right. So, again, this is very conservative. We have those spaces, but we know, we all know there's more here that the Marina uses. So the second item is, I went to the, working with Andre, we went into the declaration of the condominium bylaws, and did a bunch of additions and subtractions. So in your packet, you will see this form here. This is the declaration. So I didn't print off the whole decoration, I just printed off what changed. What's changed is in blue. So if you want, we can go down through each individual one, reflects our conversation from two weeks ago, the board had. The first item under A states that notwithstanding the foregoing, the declarant of these, in the association shall be prohibited from adding any additional pervious improvements to the site. It must continue to maintain current vegetative spaces. So that going to our point of wanting to add pavers, remove lawn, having lawn not maintained, so it's not going down to solid ground. That's stating that they maintain those, those areas as grass. That would be a person hired by the condominium association. Absolutely, yes. It's worked very well down at the other condominium association from what I've heard. We put the same pass in place there. Second item, under six, notwithstanding, notwithstanding the foregoing, the declarant of the, in the association, shall be prohibited from adding any additional pervious improvements to the site, and must continue to maintain, oh, I already said that one, sorry. We'll update that, thank you. The next item, next page, bottom, dude, that's nine I. We went and struck that line, they would mention, Brent, and, and your comments about cutting trees, removing bushes, trebary, grading, soil removal, and all that, that's been stricken altogether. The last item was under, uh, 13 maintenance. Uh, this goes back to the comment, uh, any work to reform has to come in front of the town for approval. So it states in any, all work including repairs to be formed on a unit, common element or limited common element, established subject to municipal code and municipal approval.
Well, the first example is the hotel where you, where you're going to have a combination of two rooms. Any kind of work inside around that would have, have to come to the town for.
Absolutely.
That's what your intent is.
Yeah, this also cover if they had damage that occurred to the, one of the units. Tree falling, whatever. It's possible that the, the current owners could renovate the buildings before they sell. So I think there might be a combination of both. Uh, another drawing set that, uh, I don't know if you've delved into the application, uh, is the boundaries of each individual unit. Uh, there's floor plans. That is all dimension that becomes part of the condo docs, gets recorded and that's their, their boundaries. Uh, so that covers, uh, two, three and four on my list. The, uh, the last item, um, that we had a comment on, I think from Greg, was the, uh, the floodplain. And, uh, I was able to pull up in your packet this here, uh, there is a, uh, letter of map revision based on fill. Uh, that was, uh, approved by FEMA in 2011. It's a two-page document. In the middle of the page, it's, uh, the determination has the, uh, a bold highlight around the middle. It tells you what the result of this, uh, uh, review was. So both the structure, it says in parentheses motel, and then our next page, office were removed uh, from the floodplain. Uh, so I'm just presenting documentation of that. Uh, it was online, so I believe that, uh, answers that question. This was what downloaded off the FEMA site. Yeah, yeah. Right. Okay. Yep. True. Okay. I dig a little further for that.
See.
Along with this, I did submit earlier, the, uh, the survey, uh, that we had got from Coffin for an elevation, uh, certificate. Didn't have the actual elevation certificate in it, but had the survey data. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Can dig a little bit more. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I found, uh, the butter had one as well. Okay.
It's a piece of it.
Yep. Do I submit that to Don? Great. Yep. Thank you. Um, I think the last thing, um, to go over that I mentioned was, um, the only update to the rec plan that I've done since our last meeting was to add that dumpster location here. Um, it is located on existing impervious area, so it's not creating any new, uh, impervious area. But I did add that there instead of, instead of having to put a, an easement in place for the one across the road. So, uh, given all that, uh, take any, uh, questions you may have.
Yeah. Down the line.
Quite a few of them. Um, so you're creating, you're creating boundary lines basically for these units, right? So you're going to be, it's, uh, once approved, it's going to go to the assessor and they're going to create additional, I mean, individual, um, files. I don't know what you call them, not tax mats. Well, it probably would be a tax map. So, uh, a number associated with it, what their boundary is associated, uh, taking the land value, splitting that. And then they'll have their own individual building, uh, value. So in my experience, um, you need a plan to go along with that. Especially in this situation where you have, where you have buildings so intertwined. A lot of them are on top of each other, right next to each other. So it needs to be a clear definition of what that boundary area is. A lot of towns, uh, including your own, don't have condominium conversion, uh, ordinances. Um, I haven't seen a whole lot myself in this area. So over the years, what we've been directed to, the closest that we can even get to as far as a submission to a planning board like yourself is subdivision. Um, it has some aspects that are same, some aspects don't even, aren't even close, you know? Stuff like roads and, and infrastructure like that just don't apply to this. But it is the closest ordinance in, uh, especially a smaller town that comes close to our getting a, an approved recording plan that we can put in the registry, that we can build off from. The assessor can build off from to create these individual units for taxes purposes and all that. Um, that's been my experience. It's always been a subdivision. Now you go and add trail line to it. Trail line zone, it's a, that's another complication, obviously, like, like Don said. But that's been my experience. I've done it in downtown Augusta, downtown Hollowell. Uh, using subdivision ordinances in their cities, towns. It's usually pretty quick process because again, we ask for a lot of waivers because it just, stuff doesn't apply. But again, it's the, it's the only guidebook that we have to submit a package to a city or town for this type of approval. Towns just haven't created their own condominium ordinance because they don't see it a lot. Go to a lot of towns where they've never seen this before, ever. Um, obviously the bigger, the bigger towns and cities probably have their own ordinance for this. So that's been my experience is it's the only, only place where it fits. Uh, but we do need that sign. In the end, we do need that sign recording plan in the registry in order to sell these units. And to show them where the boundary is. Otherwise it'd be, be hell to figure out what the, the boundary is, you know, without a defined plan. So we go to, we go to towns' planning boards for approval to sign off on that.
Completely agree with that. I think the challenging piece for me, our subdivision is has some nasty requirements of nitrogen. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
No way would that apply, but would you ever want to do that?
Mm-hmm.
But who makes the determination of which ones are, which, which tasks were exempted? Which one? Again, you're not.
Mm-hmm.
Non-people. Shoreland zone. We're not performing that. But you're not doing that, so we're just trying to see.
Yeah. So I went in your, your older subdivision, I went through every item that's required and listed in the application. Any of this say how we met it, or if it just totally out on the right part, I say waiver requested. And then I also went to the.
I saw that, but I think it was just one of those things like. That's. Like, okay, you wrote waiver, Don or Mark.
Yeah.
Not.
Right.
Of course.
Through, uh, Dan Wells for the public, uh, water sewer. I believe the police got it, uh, and. Right. Yeah.
According to that wasn't that.
Yep.
This instance is a transient use, and we've been told the use is not changing. It is important because the board can't grant a variance, and they can't change a non-conforming use to a, the ordinance says they can change a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, so they, this, this is part of the conversation. Also, this is a different topic altogether, but your site, the website says you have 160. But I've been through files and files, and the last time that the application or the project came to include the number of slips that they had, planning board had a public hearing decision, and they required additional parking. So the, the property down the road was not, does a marina, I find no minimized, but it was not condominium minimized. And now that that's being brought into it, that is, I don't really know what to make of that. Not for marina, though. Except for you you all did. I mean, I've been trying to look at it separately at the same time as acknowledging that there's all these references that keep being made to this marina.
Please let her finish. Please let her finish her statement.
Marina is supposedly on this, have 160, you need more parked. Now, we're talking about two marinas, but there aren't two marinas, so it, I mean, it seems like semantics, but it is important, this has to be hammered out. And I've been part of a lot of condominium, condominium is a form of ownership, not a use, I've seen docks, condos, campgrounds. So we're talking about residential and commercial uses, and the ordinance, just like you didn't really want to have to go down that road. We don't have the ability to consider that. And in this instance, there are certain things that you can consider, and it sounds like probably there's a difference. Looks like, but is the use changing? Are they just changing form of ownership, or are they changing the use? And I feel like it's gone back and forth.
Go ahead. Beth, so you have the, you handed that, the pass letters out from Beth Young from that 2004, where she took a inventory. That inventory, I think the board has that letter as well.
Do you know?
Yeah. Shows that how many units are there, all year round, residences, they have kitchens, living spaces.
There are two more on your plan than were
Mm-hmm.
I just noticed that recently as I've been trying to go through.
Yeah, so there's, there's history there of that inventory, and there's a statement there saying that meets all town ordinances and rules. That was from Beth Young, 2004. Also mentions the, the docks and the marina as well, doesn't give any quantification in that letter, but it does mention them. So not familiar with any additional parking requirements I've seen yet that were needed. Mentioned the other condominium because it came up before in the last meeting. That's why I wanted to show documentation that we do have substantial parking over there across the street. And again, this is conservative, it could fit a lot more parking spaces over there if needed, so I believe we have ample parking for both, for both areas.
I shan't, Don, correct me if I'm wrong. We've got a lot of facts, a lot of information. Currently, there's a question about jurisdiction, meaning who gets to make this approval? And I don't know if the two lawyers talking to each other, we can get to that point, and then we can make a decision, but I'm not sure we're there yet.
It's clear that the planning board has jurisdiction.
Okay.
The plan that's needs to be signed by the I feel like the
We're not there yet, we're not there yet, that's why I'm asking the questions. Thank you. Go ahead, Don.
Just that, it's, you were the board that would review this. They, lots, I feel like that was think we enough. But it's, it's this whole non-conforming aspect, is it a change of views? Are the implications that we just need to get that?
So what's the appropriate action for us to take at this point? Is there any?
Suggest that you could take the same action as at the last application, so we don't have to notice again. I could do an updated status of all here with the applicant.
We could review it again, or put it on agenda again for the next meeting. So what action's going to take place between now and then? If indeed the board says we're moving on, similar to the, the other one. And that there's some actions to be taken between now and then. It sounds like we have all the information, it's now, what's the next step?
I don't know if you have all the information.
You don't? Okay.
Opinion on that this evening.
Okay.
But it's you, always my information advisory, so it's whatever is
Why I'm saying, that's why I'm asking. So is the board favored a motion similar to what we did with the other?
I can't speak to the timing of that they're using, and I can't speak to that. I'll see, I think we can, we could try to. We can try to do that, but I can't guarantee. Well, what I, what I suggested was that they submit something in writing to me, and then I will fill and have but I can't, you know, maybe Phil's on vacation for two weeks, my, I would suggest that we will do our very best. What you all need for without any
Potential resident, is that going to require that we then go back to them and say we need more? It could. It's residential, I don't think it's allowed, we're going to have to vary it, we can't do that. So that's what we're going to have to go and tell them, that's our opinion. If it's commercial, we have the information, we have to make the determination if it's a reasonable use for that underneath our ordinance or commercial. That would be my, that would be my, my reading, again.
Understood, understood.
It's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Determined it potential, we have term to be residential, we're not then going to ask them, there's no, there's no more information that they can provide to us that's going to make our decision. It's going to benefit our decision, is there? I mean, I understand the fact, if they come back and say we're going to do this, it's residential, and we say, we can't do that, sorry. Application is still complete, subdivision submitted.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's, I mean
Changed, I observed the same thing. Is, is there anyone willing to make a motion to accept it as completely?